Make me.
Oh, okay. Sorry to the recording.
Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you. All right. Good evening. I'm now calling the Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners to order. Time is seven oh one P. M. Please note that in accordance with Government Code Section five four nine five three E. Three. This meeting is being held by teleconference only. Because we are video conferencing, we will follow a strict protocol for the benefit of the recording. I will indicate when commissioners, staff, presenters, and the public will provide comments. If you have called into the meeting and you're not using a webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comment for the benefit of the recording. Please practice considerate video conferencing etiquette by muting your line when you're not speaking and limiting distracted behavior on camera. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
All right, commissioners, I will be conducting all roll calls this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you are prepared to provide your comment or vote. President Spring.
Here.
Vice President Sherlock.
Present.
Commissioner Basiji.
Here.
Commissioner Tonka. Commissioner Tyson.
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
And we have six out of seven commissioners present. And for the benefit of the recording, I will also conduct a presenters, consultants, and staff roll call. Acting Fire Chief Glass.
Good evening.
Strategic Planning Consultant Scott.
Here.
Emergency Services Manager Gluham.
Present.
Operations Manager Barnett.
Present.
General Manager Logan.
Present.
Lead Deputy County Council Chelliden.
Present.
Assistant County Council Mitra.
Present.
Cert Program Analyst Bebe.
Present.
And I don't know, I didn't see Jackson Ricketts, our videographer, if you're there or not. I don't think so. So then presenters, consultants, and staff are accounted for.
Great. Thank you. So we now move on to the item two. Commission present remarks. And for those eagle eyed viewers of this program, they will notice something's different, which is that I'm now giving this this item. I just want to point out a few changes for those. Versus the first time in three years that Commissioner Warren is not chairing the meeting. You know, sometimes we don't tend to notice the incremental changes that have happened, but if we can compare the district today versus what it was back when Commissioner Warren started, it's pretty staggering. You know, while the credit for all this growth and change belongs to many, you know, staff, commissioners, general manager, county folks, everybody, we really can't underestimate the effort it takes to oversee this organization that both Commissioner Warren and Commissioner Vaughn really put in for these three years. So really, we really want to thank them for all this and not let that go unnoticed. All right, in just in just a small token of thanks, we would make, we will be recognizing ex-President Warren's contributions with an engraved paperweight, thanking him for his service as president.
Well, thank you.
If we were in person, we would hand it over, but you'll just have to believe that something like that will be on your way.
When something crashes through the window, I know what it is.
Exactly. And the second change worth noting is we have a new commissioner on board, and we want to welcome Commissioner Jim Basiji. You may have heard his name on the roll call. Welcome, Jim. I want to say that I'm actually familiar with Jim from my work with the town of Los Altos Hills, where he served on the planning commission for us, and in fact, he still serves on the senior commission, which, by the way, is a joint commission with the town of Los Altos as well. So he is a been involved with volunteer work in this district for quite a while. And I know he's been an advocate for fire safety in his neighborhood. I know he'll make a great commissioner. Thank you, Jim, for stepping up and for being here.
Thank you, Roger. If I may take an opportunity to extend the word of thanks to both yourself and G. M. Logan for helping me get on board with the extensive amount of time you spend with me in terms of giving the background of the the commission, all the way going back multiple years, and also the challenges and opportunities we face going forward to keep the community safe in place of the potential wildfire. Well, thank you very much, and I'm really look forward to being of service.
I can confirm that Jim has been aggressively learning about everything. He's trying, he's keeping me on my toes, trying to make sure I know what this stuff is about. So I appreciate all his efforts. And finally, you know, that we want to recognize the slot that Jim is now sitting in was ably filled by Ex-Commissioner Terry Kearney, whom we want to thank as well for his time serving here and all the efforts he puts forward to emergency services. We know how dedicated he is. We want to thank him for his time as well. And if he's if he's listening or watching this recording, we want to let Terry know that we really appreciate his service. And he also will be recognized with a small token of appreciation from the district, also be crashing through his window in the middle of the night. So we want to thank him as well. And those are the key items we wanted to get to for item two. And thank you all for your patience in letting me try and guide this ship through this evening.
President Spring, I'd like to also mention that we would recognize and provide that missile to Vice President Vaughn for his esteemed service many years as being vice president to the commission. And thank you, Commissioner Vaughn, for that. And you'll have that same missile on its way through your window.
Thank you. Thank you.
Service all.
Okay, and now for the for the, let's move on to item three, public comment. Persons wishing to address the commission on any subject not on the agenda may do so now. Please note, however, the commission is not able to undertake extended discussion or action tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. District policy is to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker unless the number of speakers acquires the commission present to impose shorter time limits. I don't think that's going to be the case this evening. Do we have any public comment on any items not on the agenda?
Yes, we have a comment from Alan.
Great. Let's hear from Alan.
Thank you. At the last commission meeting, Commissioner Warren requested that direction to given to the staff to proceed ahead with the charisma hills water district monitors that would be attached to the hydrant. I had expected to see something on the agenda this this month addressing that matter. It's been three, three years. Those monitor caps keep water from leaking, prevent damage to the road, and I think it's essential that the district moves forward with them. I don't see any any material risk involved. I only see benefits. I'm interested in hearing what's the continued cause of delay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Actually, I've I've heard no report from that since last month, so I'm assuming it's in the hands of personal water taking the next steps. If anyone in staff wants to provide any additional information than that, they can. But obviously, the first thing I would more than love to tout any progress on that project, but it's not sitting on our desks anywhere. So I think we're just waiting for activity to occur from them. I don't see any other comments on that. So thank you. Okay, let's see that we will move to item four. Actually, there are no more. I see no more hands, members of the public. Okay. Item four consent calendar and changes to order the agenda. Do, let's see, are there any comments from commission on? First, are there any comments from staff on these items?
Yes, I have a comment I would like to make, President Spring. And that is an addition to item four dot D, which is the report on the Santa Clara County Public Health Officer COVID nineteen. I'd like to announce that the city of Los Altos now has a permanent COVID testing at its civic center. And the Los Altos City opened the permanent center on Wednesday for COVID testing. And it's in a partnership with curative. The city recently launched a permanent testing site. It's open Monday through Friday, seven thirty to three thirty P. M. And it's situated adjacent to the Neutra House in the Los Altos Community Center parking lot. So a tremendous benefit to the community and wanted to make that additional announcement as a part of that that slide item four dot D. Thank you.
Jay, I wouldn't expect you to know this, but I, having read the article in the paper about it, it says it's for local residents. Is that going to be for, I assume it's not just limited to Los Altos residents? Do we know if it will be extended to all Los Altos Hills and Los Altos County Fire District residents?
I will definitely check on that, but that was my understanding also that it was it was open beyond just the city. I don't know if you need to show a driver's license or anything, but I can certainly check that out.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments from staff? Seeing none. Actually, I'm going to add one comment here. I want to point out since the last meeting, there were comments about having all the agenda items in on time so people could see the packets and see the consent items and read everything. And I know that that happened for a lot of reasons. Last month, there were a few items that came in sort of towards the the meeting time. This time, staff really did a wonderful job getting everything in on time. It was all there. I think there was one, only one item change, and that's just because some numbers came into us later. But it was nothing substantive. So I want to thank staff and especially Cory for who has to put this stuff together, forgetting making it on time this time. I'm sure the public appreciates it, and we all appreciate it. So it's worth noting what a change this was. Are there any questions from the commission on any of the consent items, or would any commissioners like to make changes to the consent calendar or any item or any order of the agenda? Seeing no hands. Okay, I will now entertain a motion. Will Commissioner make in the motion, the commissioner seconding the motion, please state their names for the benefit of recording.
Warren moves.
Tyson seconds.
Okay, nice. Let's see. First, the item is open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? Seeing none. Is there any item from the public on this item? I do see, oh, I saw Alan's hand up, but it is now down again. So I'm going to, oh, and it's up again. Let's take the the comment from the public. You may proceed, Alan.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, like to say that there are three proposed modifications to agreement items four F, G, and H. There was no staff report explaining why the agreements needed to be modified. There was no copy of the prior agreement provided. So it wasn't possible to see exactly what changed or the reason for the change. And the district's website has a dysfunctional search capability. So it's it's quite arduous to attempt to find a prior agreement. So I I did look at the agreements, but to give you an example, item four, item four H says, section five point two, payment is amended to delete the last sentence. What did the last sentence say? I don't know, because there is no attached agreement. So in the future, my recommendation is is either there's a staff report that explains the reasons for the change or provides at least the prior agreement so someone can research for the themselves why the agreement is changed and and whether whether any comments are necessary about those changes. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. No, I think good comments. And by the way, I've taken a note for myself in terms of the search function to see, I'll use this as an example to to look into that for the web search to find out what's going on, to see if those can be found in the document repository. So thank you, Alan. Okay, let's see. Seeing no further hands up. There's no further discussion. We'll now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Commissioner Spring.
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Basiji.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Great. Thank you. We will now move on to item five, mission moment. Item five A is the memorandum report and five B is the video. Vice President Sherlock, please present the report and introduce the video.
Thanks very much. As you know, strategic plan goal five includes providing community services that support our emergency response and build programs of outreach, communication, education, and regional benefits. So the Communications Committee has been working with staff along with the great video talents of Jackson Ricketts to develop these quarterly mission moments, and it brings us closer visually to the programs we help drive and also helps reconnect us to connect all of us to our mission. And so with that, I'd love to show you the most recent one. Hoping Sarah can press the button.
Firewise program is, it's actually Firewise USA. It's a national program from NFPA. Give me one second. Program is, it's actually Firewise USA. It's a national program from NFPA, and it's designed to help communities come together at a grassroots level to improve the resiliency of their neighborhood. Los Altos Hills is the perfect place for the Firewise program. They have motivated communities that do have some wildfire risk, and this brings resiliency to the communities. It's and it's an area where education is important because there's ridges and slopes and hills and all the factors that play into these big wildfire catastrophes.
So Firewise is a program. It's a nationwide program set up by the National Fire Protection Association or NFPA. The concept of that is a grassroots neighbor helping neighbor. The idea is it's in a geographical location that they have in common. So they all have the same risks, risk factors, and kind of the same evacuation needs and the same vegetation management needs. So it takes those residents working together to be part of the solution for the wildfire problem. A lot of the roads here are very narrow, somewhat overgrown, private roads with a lot of people living on them. So they're all needing to leave at the same time. They all have a geographical relationship to each other, and they need to leave on the same time and then go into just a few major thoroughfares in Los Altos Hills.
Saddle Mountain in particular is at the top of a ridge, the top of the mountain, Saddle Mountain. Fire burns up. So anything that has happened in fire behavior below them, whether it's a car fire along the roadside, if it's not caught quickly and early, it has the potential to spread right uphill. And California is in a decade of drought, so all of the moisture content of the plants is very low, abnormally low, and so that raises the risk of wildfire.
Well, you're only as safe as your neighbors make you. If you do a lot to clear your property, but your neighbors don't, then you're at risk.
Well, if my neighbor doesn't do something to protect his or her property, a spark could come over here and that could do it. My house is wood. The shakes are too, so I'm, so to speak, very combustible.
These kinds of programs like the Firewise are going to bring to visibility the fact that, you know, just because you live in a wildland area, it doesn't mean you can't, you know, do property hygiene. And and I think it encourages and it gives people the proper guidance on what to do. This particular approach seems to provide people an integration and an opportunity to get to know one another. So I think that kind of building of community, I think, is a very strong advantage of the program.
As a first responder responding into those fires, it's very hard to see the community struggle through that. They rally together generally afterwards to rebuild their community. But what can we do so that we're not having to rebuild? And that's what we want to work on in Los Altos Hills. We want to have the most beneficial outcome prior, that we won't have that fire possibly come through. As if all of the residents in Los Altos Hills were to establish a Firewise community in their neighborhood, you're going to see a Los Altos Hills that is fire adaptive and a Los Altos Hills as a community that is more resilient, that's more prepared, that understands the risk for wildfires.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that and pressing the button correctly. I want to say thank you to staff and to Jackson for pulling this together. It does take a bit of work to get the story down and do all the videos that are that need to be edited down. And the nice thing about this kind of communication is not only we can see it and the community can see it, but then we can also multipurpose it by putting up on the website and then drive additional programs to that for information. So thanks, everyone. Any comments?
Present.
Absolutely. Yeah. Any discussions for commission? I see a hand up there with George.
Oh, just, it is really nice video. Denise, you're a star, and the video, the drone shots really, really punctuate it very nicely.
Jim?
Yeah, as a member of the community, I'm actually a part of the Zone E double O five, which is essentially Saddle Mountain fire community. And I'm very happy with what, how it, the whole program came together, and the result is that really we know our neighbors very well. And I'm hoping to extend that out to the the courts with around the Page Middle Road, Lupine Road, then a couple of courts in, I did the north of myself, which is we are, we are setting the Font Creek Court. And it's an extremely valuable program. And I think it, I hope that we are able to extend it throughout the rest of the community here.
That's great. Thank you. I hope you can get a lot of visibility for this and get it distributed. So it's really wonderful. Thank you, everyone. I recognize a lot of the people speaking in that. So it's great to see, you know, the real Los Altos Hills neighbors coming out for this. So thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to item seven, receiving the general manager report. Items seven A and seven B.
Roger. Sorry, Roger. I just wanted, we should see if there's any public comment on the last item.
Absolutely. I'm sorry. Thank you. I see no, any public comment? I see no hands up. Thank you. Yes. Appreciate, appreciate it being held back there. Now, we'll move on to item seven, receiving the general manager report. Items seven A and seven B are the reports. General Manager Logan, please present the reports.
Thank you, President Spring. Let me give Victoria an opportunity to put the slide report up.
Are we skipping the Fire Chief report?
Oh.
Oh.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. See, I already messed up. I'm sorry about that.
Right along with it.
Sorry.
Skip ahead so quickly. Item six. Item six is what we'll move to, the receiving the Santa Clara County Fire Chief report. Sorry, Chief Glass, for my, for my screw up there. Item six, item six A is a report. Acting Fire Chief Glass, please provide the report.
Yeah, good evening. No problem with that. I was sitting there going, wait a minute, I thought we were on five. Now we're on six.
I'm determined to get this thing done on time, but I.
I'll make it. I will make it quick. Let me make sure I can get my screen up. Can everyone see the the report? No significant events. Again, one thing I do want to point out, our incident count to date so far this year, you can see twenty twenty. And again, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor or not, but on the top box, we're showing eighty-one calls so far in twenty twenty-two. So if you compare that to the pre pandemic COVID nineteen, we're we're righter up. Eighty was in twenty eighteen, and so that was a normal year for us pre pandemic. So again, we're seeing a return to normal. You see the twenty nineteen, everyone was kind of scared and afraid. We had some weather events coming through, a lot of calls for service. Twenty twenty, everyone was in lockdown. We were experiencing the full pandemic. You see the big sharp drop in calls. And then twenty twenty-one, we started to emerge from the pandemic, and now twenty twenty-two, we seem to be fully recovered back to our normal call volume within the Los Altos Hills Fire District. Our curve for type of call and then magnitude of the call is consistent. We see the predominant number of calls occurring midday and during traffic times. So you see the the blue is an indicator on the bar graph there of the responses, and orange is the weight of the incident, meaning how many vehicles need to respond to address that concern. EMS, our standard distribution looks pretty accurate. We shoot between sixty to eighty percent of the call volume being EMS, and here you see we're coming in at seventy-two point eight four percent. Call response types, response times, excuse me, were all within our agreed upon seven minutes, fifty-nine seconds, and actually well below that in the majority of the areas. And you do, I do want to highlight engine seventy-one was first due to several calls. And again, they were on a cover assignment while we had Rescue seventy-four doing training. Zero dollar loss for the month of January. Looks like we had six programs in conjunction with Los Altos Hills Fire District for a total of eighty-seven contacts. Here's a, here's the map showing the distribution of the calls and kind of where they landed within the within the fire district. And again, nothing significant to highlight here. With that, I'll take any questions that the commissioners might have on the report.
Great. Any discussion or questions from commission?
I have I have a comment. I just want to say, Chief Glass, this evening around five P. M., I got a phone call from the son of my neighbor two doors away that her medical alert thing had had been triggered, and could I go check on her? And I was the second on the on the site. You, your team was already there. I don't know how they did it, and I live two doors away. And so I wanted to say it was really just great to see such fast response, and she was okay. She'd accidentally hit it, but it was just really nice to see. I don't like to see your truck on my street, but in this case, I was really, really glad. And you were, like I say, you're much faster than I was, and I was two doors away.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Tyson. I really appreciate the the feedback on their work, and I'll make sure that the crews get that feedback from you. Glad to hear that it was a accidental activation, and that's always the best outcome. With the president's permission, I'd like to share one photo. I have an update for the commission. I think you'll be pleasantly surprised. We're taking delivery of our, of your, excuse me, new rescue. So I have a team in Southern California right now that are doing the final inspection on the new Rescue seventy-four. We approved this purchase a little over a year ago and came to the this board for the additional funds to take it from a type one engine company to the type one rescue, wet rescue that you see before you. Again, it's missing its door seal and the Los Altos Hills moniker that goes on the door for the city and town that it serves. But that is the new Rescue seventy-four. We hope to have it in in Los Gattis at our fleet facility for final outfitting within the month, and then you should see it in service at the district. I'm hoping sometime late March, early April. So again, I just wanted to kind of showcase the the hard work of the team. We think this is a vehicle that'll serve Los Altos Hills very well for the next ten years. That is the expected life of this vehicle, ten to twelve years. And so again, it looks probably quite a bit like the one you have downstairs, but this will have all the state of the art features and a lot of redesigned layout in order for us to carry the new equipment as the fire service evolves and serves the all risk mission in Los Altos Hills. So really happy to to showcase this tonight.
That's great. It's exciting to see. We've, it's always great to see new equipment, and we're always eager and excited to to bring that to the town. Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on Chief Glass's report? Seeing none. Thank you. We will now move on to item seven for the second time. And that will be to receive general manager report. Items seven A and seven B are the reports. General Manager Logan, please present those reports.
Thank you, President Spring. I'd like to just go to slide one, and that is an upcoming event that I would like to invite everyone to participate in, and this gives me a great opportunity to thank Fire Chief Glass and his staff and to be joined with them at this activity for the Los Altos Hills Club. It's their annual update on fire protection and prevention. And the chief is going to talk about the new equipment coming into the district of which we will have two to boast, and that's the new Rescue seventy-four and also the water tender that will soon be in preparation for the the district. And then the staff and myself will talk about our programs at Los Altos Hills County Fire District for projects and programs for protection, prevention, and resiliency, and also a tip, tips that the members can take away once they hear about our our presentation. The Zoom link is there, the ID number is there, and I invite everyone to participate. It's March eighth at eleven thirty A. M. Well, it's, it goes through one, as I'm sorry, eleven thirty A. M. to one o'clock. So that would be the the time of the program. Next slide. The communications team, you saw the mission moment number two, but now the communications team working with Jackson Ricketts, our videographer, has put together a really compelling digital newsletter, and we'll be launching that, I believe, in the next couple of weeks. And there'll be signups. We're trying to generate as many emails as possible that residents can provide us, so they will be on our list for these, this newsletter. So very pleased for that. And next slide. Is that we, the district put forth a request for proposals for IT service. And if you'll notice, we've gone very heavily into the digital market. We have a lot of digital activities going on and it's just a matter of time before we're going to need IT services. In fact, we have a need for them now. We reached out to the IT community with our RFP and unfortunately received no potential vendors. So staff is doing some conversation with potential vendors to find out what we can do to make our business more attractive to those vendors. And we'll come back to the to the commission and give you an update on our assessment and next steps. And then I'd like to go to a particular letter memorandum that is not in the packet, but we'll add it to the website because this information just came up as of yesterday. And I'd like to set the stage for some more communication that's going to take place later on in the meeting tonight. And that is, this is a letter, I don't know if you can read it clearly or not, but this was a letter I delivered in a meeting to California State Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara. And in the letter, I, from the district, I posed two questions to Commissioner Lara. I'd like to read those questions to you. Number one is, will insurance companies recognize that lower risk associated with insuring residential properties in the districts that provide prevention, protection and fire safety initiatives? Second question, can the California Office of Insurance take proactive steps to encourage the residential insurance industry to issue, renew and adjust fire insurance rates to homeowners if the property is in the district that takes these preventative and protective fire measures and/or the homeowner residence participates in such programs? And I'd just like to note that that letter, that memorandum was given to Commissioner Lara, March 9 of 2020. I had subsequent conversations with his staff through 2020 and 21. You'll see in the memorandum, there's a list of the counties of the fire districts programs for protection and prevention and building resiliency. And in summary, I asked Commissioner Lara to engage in a win-win proposition. Number one, encourage residents to participate in fuel mitigation programs for property and structure hardening and promotion of resilient communities. And number two, if the insurance injury industry would hereby reduce risk associated with residential fire events and continue to offer insurance coverage to lower risk homeowners. So we're now in 2022 and yesterday there was a news release out of Commissioner Lara's office. I'll kind of leave it at that and then just tell you that when Marcy Scott does her presentation introduction in nine A, she will allude to that news release and then we will take it from there. So I wanted to kind of set the stage with this letter and let you know what the district has been trying to promote for the last two years with the insurance commissioner's office, knowing that residential insurance renewals and being able to attain insurance is at a crisis level in our in our area and also throughout the state. So thank you. That's the end of my report.
Great. Thank you, General Manager Logan. That's a great teaser for, they're giving the waiting to hear from Marcy. I happen to have a little head knowledge of what's coming up. So I think it's really exciting. So thank you for teeing it up. Is there any discussion with the commission on that report? Yes.
I do have one question.
Please.
Thanks. So Jay, I wasn't curious why the IT, why it's such a challenge to find the IT folks? What do you think the limitation is?
I think the size of the business and the rigors that we go through in the RFP process. So we're asking for a lot of staff time from whomever the vendor is to respond to the RFP. And our business is fairly small. So I think we're going to have to perhaps change our methodology, but we want to be within the procurement of the county proper, you know, processes. So we're working with various representatives of the county to figure out how to do that. But I I think it's really size of business. Also, there's a dearth right now of IT professionals. I hear it from various companies that are trying to hire and retain IT experts. So I don't think it's lost left on the district.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you for the question. Appreciate it very much.
Yeah, commissioner comments? Seeing.
George.
Please.
Just to piggyback on that, General Manager Logan, is there a county, you know, the county has. Anyway, is there a county contract that we could piggyback on that 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 might be of some value to us?
Certainly we'll explore that. It was really helpful because County TSS, which is their technical support services, worked very closely with the district, myself, Chris Chelliden and Sarah Hendricks in putting together the RFP. And we leveraged so much of their talent and their expertise in putting together to really being able to define in IT terminology what it is we're looking for and the support we need. And so we're not doing it in a remote kind of way. We're doing it in a very open, open way for the RFP with the best support we can get from the county. And it's just been just really tremendous. But we're still in that birth area where there's not a lot of IT vendors to go around. We have a very small amount of business to provide. So I I think we're still searching for how to write ups, you know, right size and come up with some good solutions for the district. Meanwhile, I have an IT expert that helps us every time we run into problems. And he sits with the microphone right now and that's President Spring, who is our IT guru. And that's that's the leverage we have. And we try to keep as much of the trouble at bay. And so he doesn't have to bail us out too often.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I could just add a couple of comments.
Please.
Just to respond to Commissioner Tyson's comments, we're evaluating whether or not the county might have a contract that either could be piggybacked on to or amended. In addition, as General Manager Logan indicated, we're reaching out to the vendors that we were aware of, that we did send our RFP to, to find out what what the issues were. As well as we also asked the county IT TSS department to recommend additional vendors who we're going to reach out to. And it's going to turn a little bit more into more of a recruitment of a vendor as opposed to an RFP, you know, process and situation. And we've gone through a public and transparent bidding process and yielded no bidders. So as Jay mentioned, we're looking at all options to get something that works for the district as soon as possible.
I think it's a great clarification. That is great for everyone to see the processes we're going through. And we've worked with the county as well. So thank you very much. Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on the general manager report? Seeing none. We will now move on to item eight, receiving information pertaining to the local agency formation, Commission of Santa Clara County, LAFCO, Countywide Fire Service Review and the Santa Clara County Comprehensive Fire Study. General Manager Logan, please present this item.
Thank you, President Spring. The February 2nd, I will start out talking about the LAFCO Countywide Fire Service Review. But on February 2nd, at the LAFCO meeting, item nine was an update on the Countywide Fire Service Review. The LAFCO staff report is in the commission packet. LAFCO staff staff reported that upon mutual consent, the contract between the consulting group and LAFCO was terminated without cause on January 26, 2022. At the next LAFCO meeting, staff will propose next steps for how to move forward with a countywide fire service review. And then the next LAFCO meeting is April 6, 2022, 1:15 PM. So that's my report on LAFCO. I have no other updates on the county fire study. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. Any discussion from the commission on this? Or is the report something pretty directly explanatory? Seeing no comments. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. If there's no further discussion, we will now move on to the district reports, operations, emergency services and CERT. Item nine is to receive reports and provide direction to staff. See, item nine A is to receive reports and provide direct to staff on three district projects. Strategic Planning Consultant Scott, please introduce the item.
Great. Thank you, President Spring. Good evening, everyone. I just have a couple of introductory remarks and then I'll turn it over to Operations Manager Barnett. This agenda item will include rotating staff to report on a few key projects that are moving forward right now. These projects support the district's strategic plan through integrated hazardous fuel reduction, the community wildfire protection plan, mitigation measures and community education and communication. Presentation nine A also includes a new tool at the end of the slide deck to provide a projected work plan for the calendar year 2022. And as mentioned previously by General Manager Logan, we are very encouraged by the announcement yesterday made by State Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Laura about efforts he is leading in conjunction with other state agencies to focus on, number one, evacuation routes in communities and, two, vegetation reduction. Both of these are components of many current and upcoming district projects. And I couldn't help but notice Commissioner Lara is working in partnership with CAL OES, the California Office of Emergency Services, California Department of Forestry and a few other agencies. Similarly, the district continues to partner with regional agencies to tackle large and complex issues to reduce the risk of wildfire and protect life safety in our community. And more on our current projects and I will turn it over to Operations Manager Barnett.
Dave, you're on mute. You're on mute, Dave.
My apologies. Thank you, Marcy. And thank you, President Spring and commissioners for the opportunity to share the progress and provide an update on projects in our integrated hazardous fuel reduction program. So first, as shown in in the first slide, regarding the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Notice of Interest, which we submitted to CAL OES last month. We are still awaiting their decision to move us into the sub application phase. We did receive a request for additional information from CAL OES to provide clarifications. And we responded with our answers promptly. Staff is recommending to move forward in the grant sub application process if the notice of interest is approved by CAL OES. So at the same time, while we wait concurrently, staff will continue to scope the project, develop the project map. Where research CEQA requirements and you'll hear more on CEQA later as reported by Jay. And then we'll we'll continue to collaborate and work to coordinate with Caltrans, prepare for project implementation regardless of the funding source. So this concludes the FEMA I-280 grant application update unless there's other input from staff or questions from the commissioners. So hearing none, we can move on to the next slide. And the next update is regarding the Altamont evacuation route hardening. And I'll turn it over to Denise.
Good evening, President Spring, commissioners and guests and staff and public. Just wanted to give you a quick update. Our next evacuation route planning, hardening planning is going on currently. It is considered a first quarter project for the 2022 year. This project expands the entire route of Altamont Road from Page Mill to Moody. That distance is 2.25 miles. And this kind of gives a nice, if you look at it on a map, it's a kind of a triangle. And we always mentioned to have several options when you look for, you know, two ways out. So this is kind of completing, if you were looking at an exiting evacuation route, leaving from Page Mill, which we hardened last year, or Moody, or actually two years ago, Moody this year, and now Altamont. The ties all three of those together in that scenario where someone had to evacuate from that area. The next steps that we're currently, we're in still in planning phases. We have had planning meetings with staff, Fire Safe Council and the town. The route and the the maps have been started. We're asking for shared information from the town in the form of shape files. There's approximately 77 parcels. And we will be sending out authorizations of ROE, which is the right of entry to participate in the vegetation mitigation on portions of private residents where their property abuts the road evacuation route. We have key parcels that we've identified in strategic locations for a numerous amount of reasons. This is a voluntary ROE request. We will have, similar to the Moody Almonte Road, a website page that Fire Safe Council will have on their website and linked by our district website, where you can get all of this type of information from. We'll also have the ability to have a volunteer right of entry completed if someone would like to have their property evaluated alongside this project to help with the vegetation mitigation. The final scope of the work project and timelines are upcoming. Fire Safe Council will be doing the scope of work along with district staff. Timeline is to have an end of March projected start date. We also are going to have signage simple, similar to the Almonte Moody Road in a vinyl sign posted on strategic posts throughout the Los Altos Hills. And then the Fire Safe Council, like our other projects, will be the project manager and they'll be handling the vendors for traffic control and the vegetation management with staff's assistance. So that's where we currently are on this evacuation route planning. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. All right, looks like we can move to the third slide then. I'll bring it back to Dave.
Thank you, Denise, for the Altamont update. And so district and Hidden Villa continue to collaborate subsequent to the Almonte Moody evacuation hardening project that abutted Hidden Villa. Fire Safe Council has completed the assessment and is preparing its report. The report will provide information to Hidden Villa on structure hardening, recommendations, vegetation management, all for Hidden Villa to consider. We, as a, as the district, are collaborating with Hidden Villa to discuss potential community benefits such as them being a temporary refuge or evacuation point. And we will work on community outreach and education with Hidden Villa. These Hidden Villa activities align with our strategic fuel break goals. There's the mid pen strategic fuel break that we recommended to them goes right through this property. And as has been mentioned in the mission moment, it very much aligns with the Firewise Community Program that we have. It's a, it is a important parcel and we look forward to working them to meet those Firewise goals. Involvement by the by the district, any fuel reduction efforts are going to involve CEQA. If, you know, there's opportunity to arise and we do work with Hidden Villa, they have that request. CEQA requirements will be reviewed with the assistance of Fire Safe Council and County Council. And staff will report to the commission with updates in March based on the report and Hidden Villa's requests. So this concludes the Hidden Villa report unless there's other input from staff or additional questions. And I want to thank Irene for being here with the meeting. She was one of the people that did the field surveys and did a lot of work and she went back. And I know it's a long report with many HIZ home ignition zone properties that need to be assessed. So again, thank you, Irene. And if you'd like to make any comments, feel free. We thank you for your participation in the meeting.
Thank you, Dave, for the kind word. So I was like, I'm very happy to be here and contribute to Los Altos Hills.
Thank you, Irene. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jay for the next slide unless there's other questions and staff input for Hidden Villa.
Oh, thank you, Dave. This is a slide that talks about our integrated hazardous fuel reduction program and CEQA. And Chris Chelliden, if I could ask you to help me talk about this slide. But I'd like to just point out that CEQA is a state legislation that requires evaluation to inform decision makers on potential environmental effects of proposed projects that can include public projects and public sector approval or private projects. Chris, do you want to kind of highlight on any of that any further?
Sure. I mean, the fundamental idea behind CEQA is to inform public sector decision making processes. So CEQA is intended to be an information disclosure statute. It's not intended to drive public sector decision making processes. And sort of the general rule for whether or not CEQA applies is whether or not there is a reasonably foreseeable direct or indirect physical impact to the environment. So when Los Altos Hills County Fire District starts going out into the community and doing things like vegetation, you know, larger scale vegetation removal, removing trees. You know, some of our larger, more comprehensive projects, it makes sense that we would evaluate whether or not those actions need to be evaluated under the California Environmental Quality Act. And in general, the way CEQA works is, as I said, if something is what is known as a And in general, the way CEQA works is, as I said, if something is what is known as a project, which involves generally a reasonably foreseeable physical impact to the environment, a substantial physical impact to the environment, then it constitutes a project. The first analysis would be if there is a CEQA exemption that is applicable. So for example, there is a CEQA exemption for routine road maintenance. So to the extent our activities in conjunction with the town or the city of Los Altos or Los Altos Hills involves, you know, maintenance of the road, that wouldn't be a CEQA issue. However, if no exemption would apply, then we move into what's called an initial study to evaluate different impact areas as defined by Appendix G of the State CEQA Guidelines put out by the Office of Planning and Research. And then the end result of that would either be a negative declaration if no substantial physical impacts to the environment are identified or in fairly rare cases, and what's known as an environmental impact report. So as the District is doing more of these types of work, we are getting a little bit more focused on CEQA compliance and CEQA reviews. So I'm meeting later in the week with district staff to go over the various projects. And I would say CEQA is not a one-size-fits-all type of analysis. We have to look at each individual activity to determine what an appropriate CEQA compliance mechanism is. And I would also expect that the District would engage CEQA consulting expertise as well to help in preparation of these documents. But CEQA is a fairly large part of my practice as well, so I'll be assisting also. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the District might have.
If there are no more questions on CEQA, I just really want to thank Chris Chelliden and Fire Safety Council Eugenia Render for their help with CEQA. And we know that now we're getting into bolder and more, more intensive projects for our Integrated Hazardous Fuel Reduction. And we want to be compliant, we want to be respectful of our environment. We want to take all the steps necessary to make sure that we're doing it in a proper fashion. And we did that with Moody Almonte Road and now moving into Altamont. So what you're seeing, Commissioners, is a constant scaling of the skills of the staff and being very vigilant and very aware of not having unintended consequences, but being very careful about how we go about what is a very good wildfire safety protection program, and that is hazardous fuel mitigation. But on the other hand, being very respectful of our environment as we deal with our partners and particularly with Mid Penn, with Hidden Villa. So that's the endeavor that we're going through right now with bringing CEQA to a forefront and to keeping the Commission informed. Next slide, please. We'll talk about the timeline, and you'll see the timeline is pretty much wrapped around CEQA reviews. And so just wanted to put that up for an opportunity to look at the projects that we're doing, the Altamont, the I-280, the Hidden Villa, and the various, and then Laola Mora, which is down toward the middle of the year to the end of the year. So we're going to be learning a lot about CEQA and sharing that with the Commission. And I think that's a very exciting opportunity for staff. So that's the end of my comments. I'll turn it back to Dave or to Marcy if they want to make any final comments on this, this item. Thank you.
Any other comments, Dave or Marcy?
The only, the only comment I want to make is, is an update as we received word from Mid Penn that they are doing a botanical surveys. And as we need to do CEQA on our project, Mid Penn is continuing to collaborate and keep us informed on their work as they evaluate their side of the fence and are fulfilling those same. So it's great to see that partnership continue, and it's great to hear that update from Mid Penn, and they're on track to complete those botanical surveys by the end of the, by September, October, and come back to us with a response. So it's good to hear that update, and it aligns with our CEQA discussion right now.
Great news. I see a comment from George.
Yes, thank you. I have to say that last slide you showed showing the project outline was, was one of my favorite slides of the night. And I just enjoy seeing a plan like that. It tells me it's how perhaps overwhelming, just the extent of what we're doing, what it involves. But it also shows how things fit. And I just, having heard about CEQA, it gives me a little bit the willies of what it means in terms of our ability to meet a schedule. And I wonder if anybody can comment on, is that, does that add a fair amount of uncertainty to the schedules that we're seeing here?
Well, I think from my perspective, right now, we're not into those kind of ambitious projects to where I think it's going to be a delay on Altamont, Hidden Villa. I think we're still in an assessment mode. And I think that's probably the only two I would really branch out on at this point to make any statement. But Chris Chelliden, County Counsel, if you want to make any comment on that as to how you see it affecting the schedule for the District.
Sure, I mean, as I mentioned earlier, each project stands on its own merits with regard to CEQA review. So to the extent that the project is CEQA exempt, it wouldn't really, you know, result in any kind of delay. I'm aware of some Cal Fire CEQA work that may or may not be applicable to, you know, what we're doing that might, you know, speed things up. If we do an initial study and it determines that there's no significant unmitigated environmental impact, then you're in a negative declaration. That's typically a three to five month process from start to finish. And an EIR is obviously, you know, a much longer process. I would note also, though, that CEQA compliance can be very important when we're dealing with either habitat or species of concern. And so, you know, the real goal here is to make sure we're dotting our i's and tossing our t's because the most unfortunate situation would be to not be CEQA compliant and then have objections from environmental groups or others who then, you know, either threaten lawsuits or file lawsuits. And that, to me, in my world, is the biggest delay that you're most, most worried about as opposed to an incremental initial delay. I would say our partner Mid Penn is very sophisticated. I'm working with them on other matters involving the county. They're very sophisticated on the CEQA issues and the species issues. They have a lot of in-house expertise, and my hope is that we can leverage their expertise as much as possible to assist the District. But I think Commissioner Tyson, you're correct in having apprehension that it is true, and it's a statement of fact that, you know, doing CEQA review is going to be time-consuming by the nature of CEQA review. But on the other hand, to me, it's a much riskier, lengthier process if you ignore it and then end up having to do it sort of after the fact. I don't know if that answers your question, but through the chair, I'd be happy to answer any of the questions you have.
It does, thank you.
Right. Any other Commissioner comments? Appreciate that answer on CEQA, by the way. I think this focus on CEQA really just shows the depth of projects we're really getting into now. And as General Manager Logan said, this is really that it's us as a, as an organization moving up into bigger details and larger projects. So I'm glad we're really tackling that. One comment I will make as a Commissioner is really doubling back to Marcy's comments on the insurance item. I just want to add that the new statewide insurance standards that were announced Monday, which if anyone wants to look them up, just Google safer from wildfires. That's the title of the report. And its goal from the Insurance Commissioner is to make insurance available, reliable, and affordable. And the standards includes things like defensible space around a home, clearly defined evacuation routes, removal of vegetation overgrowth in communities. It's exactly what we're dealing with here. So it really is a great step in getting the state and insurance industry lined up with what you've just seen are the big products we're dealing with. So again, anyone who wants to look up safer from wildfires, that's the key thing to look up and see what's going on in that report. If there are no other Commissioner comments, we'll go to the public. Okay, any public comment on this item? I see Alan's hand is up.
I have two, two questions. The District has already done two of these projects, one on Palo Alto and one on Moody. Why does a project on Altamont require CEQA when those two other ones, as far as I know, didn't require CEQA? The other question I have is, at the last meeting, President Warren requested that the staff provide metrics to report on the Commission on a quarterly basis with regards to IHFR projects. And a quarter ended in December 31st. And I'm just curious as to when the metric report will be provided for that quarter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. Maybe a couple of comments, we can probably address those. In terms of the Altamont project, I believe part of it is related to what Chris said about roadside projects. But I could be wrong on that. Who would like to take that?
I can speak to that if you'd like, or.
Yes, please.
So the town of Los Altos Hills has CEQA exemptions that we utilized to do road maintenance. That still continues to be the case, but because we have so many projects that are, as General Manager Logan said, getting into areas that are different than those exemptions cover directly, we're looking to get that consultation from, from Council and consultants. I'll let Chris talk to anything else around that if he has any comments.
I don't have anything to add.
Great, thank you. I think that addresses the thing. By the way, in terms of HIZ metrics, I think there was a report back on January 18th meeting about the metrics of HIZ, and there will be another report coming up in April that will provide time to talk more about up-to-date metrics for the HIZ program. Okay, next, I see another comments from other public. Let's see. We will now move on to the, let's see. It's item 9B, which is a recommendation to sunset the AdHoc CWPP Integrated Hazard Fire Fuel Reduction Subcommittee. And I will present this item as a result of our most recent ad hoc committee. As you can tell from the previous report, staff has really done a great job at outlining, you know, the significant strategic efforts that are upcoming, like which include parts of the Strategic Fuel Break, I-280 project, evacuation route hardening. You know, and these are throughout the town. And we've really moved into a tactical mode on these. And with that, the purpose of that ad hoc committee on hazardous fuel reduction is essentially complete. And really further discussions and directions on these items really can occur here now at the Commission level in our public meetings. And so at our last meeting, Commissioner Tyson and I agreed that it made sense to sunset that commit ad hoc committee. Ad hoc committees are supposed to be temporary, and we feel like the, these efforts have really moved into another gear, and they're being presented to you, to all the Commissioners here. And the ad hoc Subcommittee does not need to continue. So that is being sunsetted. I don't believe that item requires a vote. It's just the Subcommittee itself defining that its project, that its item is complete. Is there any discussion from the Commission on that matter? Didn't expect any, but I don't see any. Any public comment on that item? I see a hand up from Alan. Alan, you have a comment on that?
He's just applauding.
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
President Spring, we did, we did agendize it as we receive an approved recommendation. So for purposes of the minutes, I think it would just be cleaner and clear if we could just take a quick vote. I know when we talked in the pre-meeting, we were talking about concurrents. But as I look at the agenda, it would just be, I think, easier and cleaner for Corey to be able to report that it was, that the recommendation was approved to sunset it.
Great, do we need a motion for that or just the recommendation exists on its own?
I think we could take him, I think we could take a motion, it's fine.
Would you like to move to?
Just to move, yeah, move to approve the recommendation to sunset the committee.
Right, I'll take a motion.
Tyson, so moves.
Warren, seconds.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion from Commission on that recommend, on that motion? Seeing none, any public comment on that motion? Seeing none, we will now vote. Thank you, Corey.
Okay, President Spring?
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Basigi?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Great, thank you. So we will now move on to item 9C, receiving an update on the emergency services and CERT activities. CERT General Analyst Bibi, please present the update.
Thank you, President Spring. Good evening to everybody. I've kind of changed up how my report is. I hope it's colorful and easier to read. But I want to just get to highlight a couple of things on here. Our Wi-Fi bridge project, which connects Wi-Fi to our ARC, is in its final stages of approval to proceed. Hopefully, it'll have a nice report next month on the status of that. We continue to plan our spring drill we'll be having on May 15th. The CERTs are doing a lot of the planning themselves. We're working, looking at, doing some refreshing on our roles at the ARC and how that looks after an activation. We've also been organizing our supplies. You know, we've got extra supplies due to COVID. We've got, you know, new, new toys as well that we have been putting into the ARC, and we're kind of reorganizing what we think we would need in the first 12 hours. And the rest, we're kind of storing near the ARC in different areas. So we continue to do that as well as some of our things for the District, just, you know, District events and things that we've had. We have a lot of things to store. So we've been working on some classroom organization that CERTs have been very helpful with that, and I shout out to them. The next thing that we have been working on is our community education to the community. We do have a CERT Academy that's going to be graduating on March 5th. We will have about six teens and about six adults. So really looking forward to that. We also are in the planning stages for the Emergency Preparedness Fair. That's in conjunction with the town of Los Altos Hills as well as the city of Los Altos. And I will talk a little bit more about that, why we're going to be partnering with them. We're going to be doing two fairs, actually. One in April at the Town Hall of Los Altos Hills. And the other one's going to be probably at the Community Center of Los Altos in October. We're also collaborating with the city of Los Altos in doing Los Altos, Los Altos Hills residents Stop the Bleed ongoing classes. We've been offering them every month, and I'm really excited to, to announce that we have the next class coming up on Thursday. So after this month, you will be able to see those classes in the activity guide for the town of Los Altos Hills. Also, in March, I'm not know if you, I'm sure you guys have already gotten the guide, but there's plenty of fun things. We have coffee with the District. We're having some tween summer camp. We're having some more teen CERT presentations. We're doing breakfast with the goats. So lots of fun stuff coming up from now until August. So check that out, the, the activity guide. The Alert SEC competition, competition, I'm going to talk a little bit, but I'd also like to give a shout out to Mayor Tyson. So the town of Los Altos and the Los Altos Hills and the city of Los Altos, we're going to start a competition to see who can get more signed ups for Alert SEC. The reason behind this was when, when Denise and I started looking at the percentage of people in the county as a whole that have signed up for Alert SEC, we were shocked to find out it's about 12 or 13%. Our town of Los Altos Hills is standing right now at 19% for the population. Los Altos is at 13%. So if you look at that, that's, you know, only really, not even 20% of our residents are signed up to get alerts. So we're going to transition to a competition. It's probably going to be a year long. We're going to do lots of fun community events around it, and hopefully we can win the golden prize. I don't know what it's going to be yet. So more to come on that. Also too, we are almost ready to turn in our recognition packet for the first Firewise Committee of Saddle Mountain. So we've been working really hard on gathering and information, getting the community risk assessment done and supporting that community in becoming firewise. I will turn it over to Denise just to talk quickly about her Berkeley Law webinar. And then I think she's already talked about her Altamont evac route in Hidden Villa. And then after that, I'll be doing my teen CERT report. So Denise?
Thank you, and thank you, Victoria. Again, we already had that mission moment about the Firewise communities and that recognition process. So it's been great. Victoria's really stepped up on the administrative end. That's been an ongoing, you know, we've had evacuation route or evacuation drills, and then a lot of pre-meetings that have been educational for preparedness and then for preparing. Since it is grassroots, we are just assisting in information. The, the members of the community have done all the hard work, and that's Victoria's helping them get that recognition. The webinar actually has changed its name. Initially, it was reached out from a Berkeley Law group of attorneys, alumnis, that putting together a wildfire symposium directed around SB9. So that's more equality in housing, so to provide more affordable housing to communities throughout California. That's been in the towns. That's been in the town's recent ordinance discussions at meetings. And around that, we're, we have basically it's attorneys from various cities throughout the state of California, representing both the social aspect and then the legal aspect. I'm speaking to the fire aspect in specifically towns that are impacted by a wooey environment or wildland urban interface. So we've had a couple of meetings and the Southwestern Law School is the actual official webinar that's in early March. So I'll give you a little more details. And we've already discussed the Altamont, Altamont Road and the Hidden Villa updates. And I will pass it on to the next item. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Mayor Tyson, would you like to comment at all on the Alert SCC competition? I know you know very little, but I think someone reached out to you about it. Is that correct?
About me knowing very little about something is by no means keep me from speaking about it.
Great.
But yes, I was contacted directly by the mayor of Los Altos. And, you know, I think she has some attitude. And so I had to check with our team and just say, is this something we want to do? And the answer was, you betcha. And, you know, we don't go into a game expecting to lose, do we? So, so let's, I'd be curious to know more and, but I think it sounds fun. I mean, the end result is a good thing for both sides. There's no loser, but it's still fun. So work on that golden prize and we'll see, we'll see how we can make this fly.
And I'm going to be shame, I'll be shameful very quickly. And, you know, I've talked to General Manager Logan. This is something we bring up multiple times at every meeting. So I'm going to bring this up right now at this meeting to challenge everybody on this call to sign up for Alert SCC. And again, how that benefits you in Los Altos Hills? The concern is a fast-moving fire with little or no notification. Obviously, it's an all-risk notification alert system, but in Los Altos Hills specifically and with the district's business, you know, for evacuation potential. So I would like to encourage, if you're not already signed up and on this meeting tonight, to please consider doing that. Thank you.
That'll be our next PSA right there. So let me videotip you after this meeting.
Yeah, I was going to say before that.
Yeah. Perfect. All right. You're on the books. Okay. Thank you.
Bringing that to the communications committee because we're on it and we're going to do.
I know. I'm really excited. So Mayor Tyson, we got you. We're going to, we're going to win this.
All right.
Okay. Thank you very much for your words on that. And then our teen CERTs report is coming right up here.
Teen CERT News Desk. I'm your anchor Lucy Crawlich from the communications team. Thank you to President Spring, Vice President Sherlock, commissioners, staff and public for having me here. First up with the news, Teen CERT has a new 2022 mission. Our main mission last year was to get established and bring in new recruits. We want to shift our focus to a new mission to assist our communities in emergency preparedness. I am happy to announce that we'll be focusing on assisting our vulnerable communities with focus on access and functional needs. We have created a focused project test team to come up with ideas and ways we can provide this important service to our community. Speaking of project teams, our other main project for 2022 is to create a stronger presence in our local high schools. Our teen CERT Program Manager, Ms. Bibi, has suggested that we take FEMA and the CERT Teen CERT Program Guide and create a marketing package to present to administration, parents and students. We have four teams that are working on each state colder area that will need to be supported in the club program and have objectives and timelines to meet, to create this package. Stay tuned for our next news updates at the next commissioner meeting. Breaking news, we will be adding some new members to our teen CERT group on March 5th at the Los Altos Town Hall during our LA CERT Hybrid Academy or Skills Day. If you can come and meet our new recruits and some board members, we'd love to see you. Lastly, our teen CERT is, board is deciding to combine and restructure our board slightly. Our original goal was to have a small board chapters at each school or city. As we reflected last year, we revised our original plan to have SCC teen CERT board only and have liaisons from each school instead of requiring them to have a whole board. This is the end of my report. Stay tuned for more coverage of teen CERT. And I'll leave you with one last thing to think about. We're prepared. Are you? Good night from teen CERT, the teen CERT News Desk and stay safe.
I decided to do something a little different because I'm tired of looking at myself talking. So that was Lucy's first time. She's one of our, our youngest teen CERTs and was really excited to be able to share that with you guys. So as you can hear, that's our mission for the year to address our vulnerability population and community. So we are doing our task force and getting things prepared to see how we can help in this next year. Also, that was your official invitation on March 5th to come out to the CERT Skills Graduation Day. So consider yourself invited and that is the end of my report.
Great. Thank you, certain general analyst BB. Many of you know, this is one of my favorite topics. I don't know how you can't be inspired by that having. May I ask how old she is? She's Lucy, she's.
She's four, I think she's probably 14 or 15. She's a freshman. She's a sophomore now. I'm sorry. She started as a freshman and now is a sophomore.
Amazing to me and should be inspiring to all of us that at this age, they really understand the importance of it and making a lot of us adults look bad. So I really, I just love this program. One comment I will add for anyone who's listening to this as a recording back on the Alert SCC. If you do want to get attached, alertsc.com, if you go there on the website, that's, that will give you everything you need to know. It only takes a minute to get hooked up. So please do that and score us for the Los Altos Hills team. Okay. Any other comments from the commissioners on any of these items? Seeing none. Any public comment on this item, these reports? Seeing none. We will now move on to item 10, Financial Consultant and District Clerk Reports. Item 10A is the approval of the fiscal year 2022, 23 final draft budget, which was submitted to the County OBA on February 11th, four days ago. Financial Consultant Vargas, please present the report.
Okay, let me, why don't you want to share? Let's see. All right. Can everybody see the budget in front of them? All right. So I sent to you earlier today a revised fiscal year 2023 budget. And that was due to, I had messed up the notes section. So none of the numbers changed. I just, you know, I'm a numbers person, not a word person. So my fault there. And I did add an extra column, which is just showing you the total percentage of expenditures for each sort of grouping of items.
President Spring, Corey, is there any way you could make those numbers bigger? Because at least for me, they're really hard to see. And I'm guessing the public probably has a hard time seeing them as well.
This is included in the agenda packet. So I'm hoping I'm not going to really go over this. Just wanted for visuals, you can see these pages. But this, this part here is what, these last two pages are what was submitted to the County Office of Budget and Analysis on the 11th, Friday, last Friday. So tonight, we're just going to just to share the other screen, go over a little PowerPoint slides real quick. And issue getting. Okay. So I just wanted to really quickly go over what the changes were between our meeting in January and the budget that was submitted to OBA. And I've highlighted in blue what those changes are. So there was really, excuse me, two changes for fiscal year 23. And that was I received the annual increase for service from Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District. So the annual service contract and the battalion chief services, those are recalculated. And the annual increase came out to 3.05%. We also reprojected, I'm sorry, we also changed reprojected fiscal year 22 amount for the employee position, technical analyst. So as a result, the reprojected fiscal year expenditures increased by 21,318 and the budget FY23 expenditures were reduced by 29,922. And get to the next page. So you can see here in blue, what changed was salaries and payroll for fiscal year 22 and then contract services for each of the two years, reprojected fiscal year 22, reprojected 23. And, excuse me. I added, this is a new chart that you don't see in your packet. But again, it's just, I want to highlight the percentage of expenditures. And again, I think we, very little change from, from last meeting. But as you can see, 83.6% of our expenditures are those fire protection and prevention services through the fire service contracts and projects and programs. So, you know, again, we're really focused on our mission, our goal for fire prevention and protection. Excuse me. Go. And then this is just a chart showing the last five years or less, our actual last three years, reprojected current year and then the upcoming year. The blue being revenue or red being expenditures. And then the difference between those two is the net income. And you can see, you know, in 1920, we did go down. I think that was a lot due to sort of the double whammy of management audit. Sort of, we had to cut back on our big expenditure, which was the Dead Tree Program, but also COVID. And expenditures stayed down again compared to fiscal year 19. They were down again in fiscal year 21 and then that was mainly due to COVID. So we're doing this upward trend of expenditures and that's what we really want to be seeing. So reprojected fiscal year 22 going up slightly, fiscal year 23, we're hoping to keep going. Fiscal year 24, we'd like to start dipping into some of that fund balance. So, you know, it's, it's really, it's been the COVID restrictions that have kept us back. It's been also the unfulfilled staff positions, which has kept us back. And so we're expanding staff. You know, you heard today, we're expanding programs earlier. So we just want to keep that upward trend of spending the taxpayers' money for fire prevention or for prevention protection. So we're heading in the right direction. By next year, I would like to see this graph with the green in the negative. So, and I've got then just sort of repeat our development process. You've seen that before. We, we've discussed this budget. I'm glad we started it early in November. We had a lot of discussion on it. So there's been the special subcommittee meeting. You've seen this already at two different meetings. This is your third time looking at this. And as I said, the draft has already been submitted to OBA. But if for some reason tonight, any of you say, oh, wait, hey, I see this change. I'd like to see that change. I still have time to get that to them tomorrow. So they are lenient on that because the county executive doesn't start reviewing until the 22nd, next Tuesday, that would be. And then, yeah, our next step. So the county executive is going to review it. At our April meeting, we will come back and approve the final budget. And that's with any of the county executives recommending, recommendations or changes. And then into May, May 9th through 11th, the budget workshops with the Board of Commissioners. And then June 13th, 14th and 16th, the, I'm sorry, the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors will have their budget hearings. And that is when the final budget will be approved. I think that is it for that. Yeah, stop sharing. And that is the end of my report on that. If there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Great. Thank you, District Clerk Vargas. Are there any questions from commissioners? I'm seeing none. I know, again, these are all numbers that we've, you know, seen and talked about last time. So I wouldn't expect a whole lot of discussion. Okay, I will, guess I will entertain a motion to proceed with this. Will the commissioner make the motion? The commissioner second the motion. Please state their names. It's the benefit of the recording.
Warren moves to approve the budget.
Thank you.
Sherlock, seconds.
Thank you.
I do want to clarify, this is just to approve the, the draft budget. So this is in essence approving what was submitted to OBA. We're approving it in draft form. The actual final budget is not approved until the April meeting. So.
Exactly.
Draft budget.
Great. This item's open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this? I see Alan's hand. Alan, you may go.
Thank you. I would just like to point out that I had made some comments previously about the budget, none of which the, the commission discussed. I will also point out that the commission has had a pattern of showing each year that substantial expenditures were going to be made to the extent that there'd be little carryover or actually a drawdown of the, of the substantial funds that the district has. And in every single year, none of those plans, excuse me, that's not fair. The, the plans didn't come to fruition. So for instance, in FY19, it was expected to be 486,000 left over. It turned out to be over 3 million. And FY20, the plan was to spend 2 million more than what the revenue was. And it turned out there was a $5 million excess. And FY21, the plan was to spend $500,000 more than revenue. And it turned out there was a $4,790,000 excess. And the same thing is going to be true in FY22. The plan was to have a $464,000 excess. And the reprojection at this point is over $3 million and it'll probably turn out to be higher than that. My point in, in making this statement is just to say that the budget doesn't appear to be a plan. The budget appears to be a, filling in, filling in a bunch of numbers. And what I've tried to say is that there isn't an operating plan that, that corresponds to the budget. And the last four years demonstrates that by the fact that in every single one of those years, it hasn't been off by just a little. It's been off by, you know, for three, four, $5 million. So my concern is, once again, we're showing a, the district is showing a budget surplus of 464,000 for the year. I suspect by the time the year is over, the surplus will be substantially greater than that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Alan. Obviously, budgets and budget history is a very large subject, which we're not going to go into now. I, I do take issue with some of your comments in terms of, I think a lot of planning has gone into the numbers that go forward. And there's a lot of significant work, both from strategy and plans represented in these numbers. And, and every year, these plans are getting bigger and bigger and more collaborative with the rest of the county and larger strategic views of what we can tackle for our residents. Are there any other, no, any other public comments on this item? Seeing none. If there's no further discussion, we will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Spring?
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Basiji?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Great. Thank you. We will now move on to item 10B, Form 700s. District Clerk Vargas, I'll let you present this item.
Yeah, I muted myself and then it's like, oh, no, wait, I'm not in yet. Let me find my Form 700. I'm sorry. Oh, my goodness. I am not.
Well, I'll take it while you find it. Basically, this is a reminder to the commission. Having just done this myself yesterday, I think, that we need to file Form 700s every year, annual statements of economic interest and complete the mandated training requirements. I'm not sure about the mandated training requirements. I'll let Corey speak to that. But this is basically just a reminder that everyone needs to get to the Form 700 every year.
Yes, thank you. Yeah. And Victoria to the rescue. If you could go to the next screen, it would be lovely. Okay. And yes, so it is reminder time to file your annual Form 700. Okay. And yes, so it is reminder time to file your annual Form 700 timeline. You should have all received the email from me with directions for filing and a copy of our conflict interest code and links to reference materials on Friday. You are encouraged to use e-filing system and that's directly through the County Santa Clara Disclosure System. Submissions are submitted directly to the clerk of the board and it just makes for ease in, if you mail it to me, it can get lost in the mail. So e-filing is is recommended. And also, if you if you send a paper copy, it has to go to me and then I send it to the clerk of the board and you have a sooner due date. So e-filing, your due date is April 1st, 2022. If you submit it by paper, I need to have that by March 16th. Now, on March 15th, I will send a reminder email out to individuals who have not yet submitted the form. I believe also you should have received, at least I received, notice that the disclosure system sent automatic reminders, or it's the the county's Form 700, should have sent you an automatic reminder as well. So it's, I sent you one, they sent you one. You need to do it. If you don't do it, there's a penalty. The filing officer can assess a penalty of $10 per day, up to $100. Or the Fair Political Practices Commission can impose a much higher fine if you continue to failure to file. So this is a requirement. You have to do it. And everybody who has to do it has received notice. So that is it for Form 700 and I have received one as of today. You do still have time, April 1st, but sooner you can get that done, the better. And then as far as the harassment training, every two years, you are required to complete that harassment training. And those that are due, I did send a reminder or an email to you with the module to take those courses. I can resend reminders as well if if needed, but please get those done if you are due. And that is the end of my report.
Great. Thank you, District Clerk Vargas. Any discussion from the commission on those items? Seeing none. Any public comment on those items? Great. Thank you. We will now move on to item 11, Personnel. Item 11A is the Second Amendment to the District Clerk Employment Agreement with Corinne Vargas. General Manager Logan, please introduce this item.
Yes, thank you, President Spring. This agenda item is to discuss and take possible action to approve a Second Amendment to the Atwell District Clerk Employment Agreement between the district and Corinne Vargas. The proposed Second Amendment is included in the District Board of Commissioner Agenda Materials and for this item and includes a compensation increase. California Government Code Section 45953 subsection C3 requires the commissioner, the commission to orally report a summary of the proposed compensation before taking final action to adopt that compensation here by approving the Second Amendment. The proposed amendment extends the term of the agreement by one year to March 1st, 2023 and increases the hourly compensation rate by 1.6% from $62 per hour to $63 per hour effective March 1st, 2022. All other compensation and benefit terms remain the same. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, General Manager Logan. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? Seeing none. I will now entertain a motion. Will the commissioner make the motion and the commissioner second the motion? Please state your names for the recording. Looking for a motion.
Warren moves.
Looking for a second.
Sherlock seconds.
Thank you. This item is open for discussion. Any discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Okay, we'll now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Spring?
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock?
Yes.
Miss Commissioner Basiji?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent. Thank you very much, everyone.
Great. Thank you. We will now have a very similar item with item 11B, which is the Third Amendment to the Emergency Services Manager Employment Agreement with Denise Gluhman. General Manager Logan, please introduce this item.
Yes, thank you, President Spring. This this agenda item is to discuss and take possible action to approve a Third Amendment to the Atwell Emergency Services Manager Employment Agreement between the district and Denise Gluhman. The proposed Third Amendment is included in the District Board of Commissioners Agenda Materials for this item and includes a compensation increase. California Government Code Section 54953 subsection C3 requires the commission to orally report a summary of the proposed compensation before taking final action to adopt that compensation here by approving the Third Amendment. The proposed amendment increases the hourly compensation rate by 1.1% from $88 per hour to $89 per hour effective February 1st, 2022, with future annual increases that the Board of Commissioners, Commissioners approve, being effective the first day of the month when approved by the Board of Commissioners. All other compensation and benefit terms remain the same. End of my report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions from commissioners? I will now entertain the motion. Commissioners making and seconding the motion, please state your names.
Tyson moves.
Vaughn second.
Great. The item is now open for discussion. Any discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Spring?
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Basiji?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Thank you. We will now move on to item 12, Commission Member Reports. You know, this is an opportunity for commissioners to provide reports on any future agenda topics. Any comments from the commission on anything that'd like to be added for future discussion? Not seeing anything. That's fine.
I'm thinking about filibustering here to keep this thing going for over two hours. You know, you're going to pull this one in, you know, under two hours, your first time out of the gate.
Well, here you got to keep talking. This is not, you constantly the whole time. Okay, is there any public comment on this item? I'm not sure what you could comment, but I'm open. Thank you. Hearing none. We'll now move on to item 13, Adjournment. This concludes February 15th, 2022, regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. The meeting is adjourned at 8:38 PM. The next regular meeting will take place via Zoom on March 15th, 2022 at 7 PM. Sergeant General Analyst BB, please stop the recording. And thank you all for.